The council meeting will be back in session. We are in the non-action items. We're ready to have Item D, a discussion on a benefit improvement district. If the clerk would read, please.
D is discussion to consider establishing a benefit improvement district for the Horseshoe Bend subdivision number four located near southeast 43rd Street and southeast Grand Oaks Avenue.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, actually with your permission, we'd like to handle the next two items concurrently. They are similar issues and we're asking for a similar outcome, which is to say ultimately we'd like for you to set a public hearing date in the future. So Mr. Peak's going to come forward and make a presentation on both Items D and E.
All right, and we have a handout on that, ready to go.
Thank you. Sure, we're here to talk about a benefit improvement district. What I wanted to do is provide you an overview of the benefit improvement district process and then actually talk about the two petitions that we have before us. So the benefit improvement district process, this is something that's specified through state statutes. Basically, it starts with a petition, a request that can be filed by private individuals for public or financing of public improvements. It's a request, I mean, the governing body has a discretionary decision to make here about whether supporting the petition request and granting the city to finance the cost of that public improvements that ultimately would be paid back by assessments to the private individuals. The process basically says you have a petition. We have before you tonight, we're discussing the request for a public hearing. We would hold a public hearing and then seek a action on a resolution of advisability, whether to support or not support the benefit improvement district petition. In addition to the state statute process, in 2015, the governing body passed a resolution that also defined a process internally that the city of Topeka takes when considering these benefit improvement district requests. And that was basically to mitigate the risk. I mean, since we are basically providing government financing to public improvements, similar to a banking process that, you know, the developers providing collateral, we're doing some financial due diligence assessment, and then ultimately making a recommendation whether to support or not support that request. So our process looks like we have a benefit district review committee that consists of the city manager, the public works director, the finance director, planning director, city engineer, and department of neighborhood relations. We require a number of documents to be submitted along with that petition request. Some of that includes basically a market feasibility, you know, if they're going to assess these lots with specials, can the market support those special assessments? A letter of credit, you know, and a number of other things that we look at through that financial due diligence. And then we also do a cost benefit analysis, which was provided in the packet. And then moving forward in this overall process, like I said, tonight we're here for discussion just of setting the public hearing. We'd come back to you in December to actually set that public hearing date and have the public hearing on January 3rd. I have my dates wrong here, that's actually 2017, not 2016. And then also seek action on the resolution of advisability at that same meeting. And so that's a very brief general overview of the process, and I'd stand for any questions before diving into the specific petitions.
And I might add, we took this action, you said, the city of Topeka resolution, we did this about a year ago, to put in more protection so that we don't experience some of things we did in the past. Is that a nice way of saying it? And I think some of the things that we have here are very important, very good steps.
Yes.
Any questions on this? Okay, proceed.
Okay, so we'll talk about the first petition that we have for you. This is for Horseshoe Bend subdivision number four. It's a benefit improvement district in the southeast portion of town. Basically, that would consist of streets and stormwater improvements and sewer improvements. So what you have on this graphic is basically the lots that would be included in that improvement district. And then the request is basically for the funding the cost for streets and stormwater, which totals approximately $758,000. Sanitary sewer improvements at $219,000, for a total estimated cost of $978,315. And so at the completion of that work and the actual construction costs, all those factored, 100% of that cost would be assessed on a per-lot basis for those parcels identified within the improvement district. And so that's basically the nature of the petition request.
How many lots or how many sites do you have? I mean, I just, it's pretty big, isn't it? Thirty-six, it says that on here probably, doesn't it?
I didn't.
You counted them, it's thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
Yeah, great number, all right. Any questions? Yeah.
This would apply to both, and actually your whole conceptual stuff. Could you talk for a moment about whether there's any difference if we participate helping with the financing in the construction or the cost of construction of these streets and sewers? And then could you talk about the why they would want to have us finance? What's the difference in interest rate or cost?
I think that's to our administrative, our financial person.
And Councilmember Hiller. So I'd say in general, special assessments are a tool that's utilized throughout the state of Kansas. You know, it's a tool that it's, you're either finding, you're getting it one way or another. It's either coming through the sell, or the sell the home price and the land, or it's coming through taxes. So it's a tool, I'd say, that would keep down the pricing of houses and then allow for also our tax exempt status to save some money on the interest over time and to take that and spread it out over up to 20 years. So it's something that's allowed throughout the state of Kansas. We, last year, as the mayor alluded to, updated the policy to try to help mitigate the risk to the city because with the previous policy, the city took on too much risk. But with this, you know, they're no longer allowed to bond, so we don't bond for water improvements. That's something that the developer has to finance, the water line. They provide a letter of credit to the city so that in the event that the specials aren't paid, we can go pull that from the bank and the bank will pay us. And there's also some due diligence. We've got certifications from realtors within the city that say that the specials that are going to be set within these districts are within a boundaries that the market would allow for so that we're not getting into a situation where the specials are really high and those lots aren't going to move.
Okay.
Thank you. And one of the questions was, what often, I mean, right now, interest rates are really low, so what would the gap be between what that developer could get on the private market and what they get through us? And, you know, how would that look if they're back up at about 8%?
Councilmember Hiller, I don't think I could answer that question accurately without having a knowledge of, you know, from a bank's perspective of what they would provide potential developer for financing. I would doubt, what's that? Yeah, I mean, the tax exempt status provides a number of, and all, a number of things for, that we can get money at a cheaper rate than a developer could by going to a bank and privately financing it. And also, I'd probably say another benefit is that we can get it at a fixed rate for a longer period of time due to our credit worthiness, whereas maybe a developer might not be able to get a loan from a bank for a 20-year period to finance some street improvements.
Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. With doing it in this fashion, do we have a better ability to affect the quality control over the infrastructure that's installed? I would assume that in our case, we would build it for longevity where a developer might necessarily be looking for the lowest cost. And is that an advantage to doing this over pushing it back on them to find a different funding mechanism outside of the advantages that Mr. Kaufman just discussed?
So, I mean, by this process, we are the construction managers for the project. I mean, we're managing the design process, letting the project for bidding and construction. So there is, I would say, additional oversight from the city through this process than maybe if it was just a private plan review that came through, they hired their contractor, did the work. It's still the same standard technical specifications, whether it was done by a private or a public individual, but we do have a more hands-on administrative role through this process.
So they'd have to meet the same longevity standard essentially either way?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brandon, thanks for those, what you said there, telling us the differences. Is there any chance before now and the next time we look at this, could you possibly, could you put together a document like you guys do so well, kind of saying how it used to be and how it is now? Because I know a lot of people are going to be, you know, questioning here, the city is, you know, putting, they're putting the city's credit at risk, or taxpayer money at risk, I guess ultimately. And I think it's great the safeguards you guys put in place. I just, I'd love to be able to have those changes. Thank you.
I hear the discussion. You're going on now.
So we'll move on to the second request. This is for Misty Harbor Estates, number five, benefit improvement district. It includes 14 lots highlighted within the yellow area there. And basically what they're asking within their petition is just for the streets and stormwater public improvements at a cost, estimated cost of $288,477. And once again, those costs would be apportioned to 100% of property owners within the district.
Is this the entire area that was annexed into the city? Or is this only a portion? Because I thought the area was larger, it's larger than this, so they're only doing...
It's only, it's only a portion, yes.
What we annexed, right?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct. And in addition, as, you know, the policy that was approved last year by the governing body, there's a maximum amount of lots that can be phased in. It's 45 lots at a time, so they can't go over that 45 and seek public financing. They could finance it themselves and do that, but for public financing, it's capped at 45 lots now.
Okay. Very good.
That concludes the presentation for the seat.
You don't want to continue. Any other questions? Okay, that completes the discussion. Thank you very much. This will be on then for action, setting the public hearing date. That completes the non-action items. We then proceed to announcements. There is no council meeting the next two weeks, so we do not have a preliminary agenda. So, Mr. Interim City Manager, here are your announcements, please.
Mr. Mayor, thank you again. As you noted, there's no council meetings the next two weeks. We didn't have one last week. I've been taking a little grief throughout this meeting from staff about who agendized this lengthy meeting. That's the rationale behind it. There's, we have a lot to get done between now and the end of the year, so apologies in advance. The next couple of meetings will be like this probably. We just, we have a lot we want to get moving from a staff and governing body perspective. You see Major Scott standing in the back. If you saw him a week ago, you saw him with a beard because Chief Brown relaxed the rules for the police department as a fundraising event. I thought it was worth pointing out because it was kind of a unique event. They were officers, male officers were able to grow a beard or become non-clean shaven, and female officers were able to do things with their hair and with their nails if they paid $50. Those dollars were then matched half by a local business and all those funds, which the total amount will be close to $5,000, are going to books for the elementary students in 501. So kudos to Darren and the rest of the group for doing that. We've mentioned tonight, the last 2040 meeting is tomorrow evening, and that will be at Washburn Tech. It's sort of for the southwest part of town, but if you haven't had a chance to attend any of them, certainly all are welcome. I've been to a couple of those already and they've been good events, and there's been a lot of good feedback. You received a press release from ALI, I believe, late this afternoon about the zoo's holiday and lights recycling drive. If you have old lights, you can begin dropping those off a couple of hours ago at the zoo, and they'll take those and they recycle them to, they go to Southeast Enterprises and they do 100% recycling. And last year they did 1,600 pounds, which is pretty great. And then finally, I think everybody got a cupcake, a unique cupcake at their place tonight.
Hubert.
Hubert. So Saturday is World Toilet Day, and so we're using this, we celebrated it somewhat last year, but we're doing a larger scale effort this year to highlight what's really a serious issue. If you've ever been anywhere in the developing world, you know that access to good water and good sanitation is a luxury, not a way of life. And so we're using it to highlight our WPC employees and the amazing job they do, but also call attention to the fact that, you know, one in three people across the world don't have access to a clean and safe toilet. So they'll be on Kansas Avenue, I believe, Thursday and Friday. We have an unofficial mascot, and they'll be doing selfies and promoting the event. So if you see them down there, don't be afraid to get your picture taken with them.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. And we've got Councilman Harvard, Councilwoman Hiller.
Just wanted to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving and encourage people to participate in Small Business Saturday and as people start their Christmas shopping to shop local artists and retailers. As of last year, we're now up to three dance companies that do the Nutcracker. So encourage people, the Chocolate Nutcracker was new and it was phenomenal. So encourage people to get those tickets early and get those kids lined up or other grownups and go see the Nutcracker, go to Miracle on Kansas Avenue and otherwise have a great Thanksgiving season.
Councilman Emerson. Councilwoman, Deputy Mayor Delaissla.
Oh, so a few things. First of all, I'll start with something pretty sad. I said this in one of my Facebook posts today, titles really mean nothing, so it's okay if you don't remember. I'm not a person that has been impressed by titles. I think that we all have power and love and in character. And if you had the opportunity to be blessed by the presence of Kenny Can, if you were at Washburn University, if you were at Capitol Plaza and ever received an omelet from a man that had the biggest smile in the universe, Topeka lost a wonderful human being. And he made such an impact on so many people's lives. I mean, Washburn University made a post today, there were hundreds of people making comments of the impact that he had on their lives. And I think that Kenny is a great example, was a great example, and will continue to be a great example of what we exemplify in our community, which is love and compassion towards each other. So on Kenny's honor, I would like to call everybody to just, people are so frustrated right now with everything happening. I call you all to love. I call you all to kindness towards each other. I know that sometimes we could be difficult. I'm difficult. God bless Nicholas for dealing with me and my kids, but let's just be kind to each other. All of us are blessed. We live in Topeka, pretty rockin' place. We live in the States. We have access to things that people have no idea that are luxuries, that we consider to be nothing. And it brings us back to Thanksgiving. Let's be thankful for the people that we have around us. I'm very thankful to be around all of you. I am so blessed to work with this team of people. That is just so phenomenal, from the staff, from the body, the governing body, our mayor is spectacular. Just, let's focus on the things that are good in our life right now. I think we all need that. I had the opportunity also to participate in the National Conference for the Blind. Mayor Wolgas allowed me the honor to do some introductions over there, and it was very humbling for me to go over there and have the experience of trying to communicate with somebody. And one of the cute moments was, they asked me, "Are you excited?" And I said, "Yes, I'm excited." And they said, "No, are you excited?" So I want to say thank you to them for being so open and so wonderful. And it was, it was interesting that they were asking me, "What are you guys doing for the blind?" And I was so excited talking about everything that we're doing in our city with the ADA group, because we include everybody and we do have those conversations. But I think that it's important that we still get reminded once in a while that there's other groups of individuals that maybe, again, we are not cognizant about, and let's think about their needs. Then the next thing that I'm going to say as a celebration, one of my good friends, Becky Gray, works for the Housing Department at Pitt State, Pittsburgh, the city of Pittsburgh. And Pitt State has done a huge partnership with their downtown, and they're joining with the university, and they have this huge thing that the city and everybody work together. They're going to have like this building with part of the university offices down there. And I just think that that's just absolutely visionary. So Becky and everybody in Pittsburgh, you're rocking, awesome, but watch out because we're also doing great things in our downtown. And last but not least, in that heart of Thanksgiving and being kind to each other, today I found out that KVC, as you know, is a local organization that is statewide, and they focus on working with children who are in foster care. They have, these children all throughout the state typically do not have a parent to give them Christmas. They have been working since August to get kids presents. They still have 700 kiddos that will have nothing to open on Christmas Day. So this is a call to say, hey, contact KVC. The gifts are not expensive. What they want is for the kiddos to have at least one or two gifts to open up, and it's super simple. You don't have to worry about what you're going to get them. They ask every one of the kids to go ahead and write four things that they would like to receive, their clothing size, shoe size, and everything is there for you. And then you get to choose one or two things for the kids and just send them over to KVC and make a child happy this Christmas. Thank you very much.
Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. A couple of quick things. I want to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving. On December 3rd, the United Way is again doing their Christmas concert, and this is critical to our community because it's a food fundraiser. And so it's a food drive, and their whole goal is to feed folks at Christmas. You know, again, toys, food, this is a sharing time of the year. December 12th, hope everyone can go. Also, we keep tacking days on Thanksgiving. So we have Thanksgiving, then we had Black Friday, now we have Small Business Saturday, then they added Cyber Monday. But one I'm particularly excited about is Giving Tuesday. So if you survive all these other things, please remember to make a donation on Giving Tuesday. Again, you know, Christmas is the time for giving and sharing, and there are a lot of folks out there that will not have a single thing for Christmas. If you can't make it to the food drive for the United Way on the December 3rd, I would encourage you to give a little bit on Giving Tuesday. Buy a toy for KVC, make a donation to a nonprofit. The, oh shoot, the Red Barrel people, why have I lost that?
Salvation Army.
Yes, thank you, Salvation Army. Their kettles are firing up pretty rapidly, so please remember those that are less fortunate to you. Doesn't matter how little you have, there's always someone with less. Have a great weekend, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Schwartz.
I brought some seeds here that are Save the Monarch. We had the resolution this summer. And so you can keep these seeds and plant them in the spring. But we passed these out at Halloween, and it was a really big hit, and actually a bigger hit with the kids than the candy was. So I'm encouraging people to do that next year. But we're, this weekend is the Jewish Global Day of Learning, and the theme is Under the Same Sky, and it's being one with Mother Earth and taking care of our planet. And so I hope that you tune in, you can tune in on the website and just Google it, but anyway, that's that. My gem for the week is all of our volunteers in Topeka, back to the election night, all the people that volunteered at the elections and gave up their time, the ones that will volunteer for the Thanksgiving meal, the community Thanksgiving meal, the ones that volunteered at CASA, Home for the Holiday Tours this weekend. So I really want to thank all of our volunteers in Topeka.
Thank you, thank you. Councilman Cohen. That completes our announcements. We then go to public comment. Mr. Richard Laird.
I want to try to help a little bit. You have, you're out 10 years on some stuff. If you had a public comment session on your sales tax exemption where you decided that you didn't want to work on the Senate, on the storm sewers, right? And you pass an ordinance, and you can replace, there was about six things. It took me a long time to find that out. When you started on Hope Street, now you're doing phase two. When you started on the first phase, I immediately started making phone calls to city engineers trying to find out if we could stop the flooding. It was a done deal because this council passed an ordinance that your engineers say, well, we can't do anything about flooding. The design engineer from Cook, Flat &amp; Strobel didn't even know there was a flooding problem until December, when he gets to the meeting with the public, and they say, well, can you do something about the stormwater in the streets? Oh, yeah, well, he went back to his drawing board and tried to fix it. It was a little late then. I was a pain in the, I wasn't very pleasant sometimes, but I do believe I got bigger storm drains under the street and they redesigned the take-up at the gutter. So maybe with my kicking them in the rear all the time, they actually went ahead and started designing a system that they can add to. I don't know, but I had heard that they put in, they put in big cement culverts, took out the old stuff. You got a horseshoe bend project coming up. I got a little house over in Shunga Flood District. Horseshoe Bend, I think, is out that way, right? Out west?
No, it's south. It's south.
It's south, okay. Well, when you do something, if you had another session where somebody that lives in the Shunga floodplain is going to be affected by a decision out there, I wonder if they'd even realize when you wanted to make an improvement district to come and ask, well, where are you going to run the stormwater? You going to run it down Shunga? The floodplain gets bigger every year. You guys probably know that. FEMA came in about four or five years ago and increased the floodplain and got quite a few people that had to pay 600 bucks a month. After a short period of time, my bank bailed out on the mortgage and just said, hey, we don't need to do that. So I saved my 600 bucks. But so, it's really difficult for us out here on the public to say, oh, don't do that because that's going to cause this problem. They don't even think about it. I wouldn't have thought that a half-cent sales tax resolution that you passed was going to cause flooding on Hope Street. I would have never imagined. I looked forward to you doing that street for years because I was looking forward to changing the sewers. And that's one of your biggest floodplains, Martin Watershed, I think it is. Last week I was here, or two weeks ago I was here on, I told you I was holding up your project. You got that going today. Yesterday I got a call from a city fellow, Darren Kaufman, I think, but he did the same thing everybody else does. I think they're afraid to say, they're afraid to go really look. Their objective is to give a political resolution, get rid of the problem. If they can close that, it's a process that they completed, they did their job. There's a lot more analysis required on what I did or what I said last week. The guy was there, he didn't look at either property on either side of the two problem properties. He stood on the fence on the other side and looked over there. Well, four years later, yeah, you got grass and you got everything you need.
Your time is up.
I need about a minute.
Do you want, you need an additional minute?
Yeah.
All right. Councilman Jensen moves to an additional minute. Councilwoman Schwartz, seconds, any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Those who vote no, I vote yes.
Okay. Got one minute?
We have, so please continue for one minute.
Okay. Okay. One thing I learned recently, well, within 24 hours, is you have no protection. If the construction company comes in and steals dirt off a project, you can't prove they didn't. If I got witnesses that say, "Hey, these people came in, removed dirt, cracked the garage. I want, I want payment for the garage. I want the dirt replaced." And I've got three witnesses, what do you have? You don't have anything that I know of. At least your engineer didn't think so. So it's difficult. What you guys do is not a simple thing, and trying to do it 10 years in advance is really challenging. And there is no process for me except to file a lawsuit and file a claim. I can't make a phone call to anybody and actually get any discussion or say, "Hey, well, you didn't analyze that problem. You just got your form completed." So I don't, and maybe that's what you expect. Maybe you expect us just to file a $3,000 claim and get our carpets repaired and all that stuff. So I'm not sure exactly what you want us to do, but at some point, we have to have some recourse.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
We appreciate hearing that.
Good luck.
And happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. That completes the public comment. And council members, we moved item E of the action items to this point in the meeting. So if the clerk would read that action item.
E is a resolution introduced by Deputy Mayor Michelle De La Isla, authorizing city administration to issue a request for proposals for an executive search firm to assist in hiring a city manager.
And with that, council, we had a request to go into executive session. So I think we do give us some parameters for that with the city attorney.
Of course. The motion would be that the governing body recess into executive session for a period of 15 minutes to discuss personnel matters related to non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy of those discussed. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: members of the governing body, Human Resources Director Jackie Russell, and myself.
All right. There's your motion. Councilwoman Schwartz moves. And Deputy Mayor De La Isla seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. opposed vote no, I vote yes.
We have seven yes.
Seven yes. And for the public, we will go into executive session. There is a possibility that that action will be taken when we come back out of the executive session, and then we have a second short executive session following that. All right. So we'll go into executive session when the room is clear.